The council will come to order. Please use the e-vote application to record your presence at this time.
All right, the quorum roll call is now open. Please mark yourself present from your device. If you need help with your login, please raise your hand and we'll have someone come by. The voting is open.
Alderman Itz-Mitts is raising her hand. Alderman Hairston. We gotta fix Hairston's machine. AldermanKapelman. I wasn't gonna say operator error, but you know. Aldermanmitts needs some assistance.
AldermanKing, do you need help? Good. She said she's good. Did you hit your cast or vote? AldermanGarza, did you hit cast or vote? AldermanBurke not here. AldermanColeman, do you need assistance? Nope, you're good. AldermanDavidMoore, he's not here yet. AldermanCurtis, I don't see him. AldermanNado is not here. Talafaro is not here. AldermanReboyes, do you need help? It's loading. Okay, his is loading. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Nugent will mark you as present. AldermanGardner will mark you as present. AldermanMitts will mark you as present. AldermanKing? It's still loading? Okay, AldermanKing will mark you as present.
AldermanMoore.
AldermanMoore is present. I think that's everybody. I don't seeOsterman.
AldermanMoore, please.
Yeah, we got AldermanMoore.
AldermanReboyes. AldermanKing. DavidMoore still.
The voting is closed.
All members present have been recorded. There are 44 members present, six absent. There is a quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The invocation will be delivered by Rabbi Shoshana Conover from the Temple Shalom of Chicago.
Thank you.
Adam Rabbi.
Well, good morning. It's an honor to be with you on this sunny day, though we can't necessarily see it. And I want to thank our amazing city clerk in Valencia. Thank you to our mayor. And I also want to say that it was wonderful to come in the elevator and to be greeted by all these casino workers today. And I think that they had a great message on the back of their shirts that said, "Unite Here." May we unite here. So I come to you in this magical time of the Jewish calendar, when we count our days and we make sure that our days count. So it was at this time millennia ago, when our people trekked from shores of the parted sea, of the Red Sea, with lips opening to freedom. And then we trekked for 49 days to the foot of Mount Sinai, where we received Torah. So that journey lasted for seven weeks, for 49 days. And right now, we reflect on that soulful journey from redemption to revelation. Wouldn't we love to receive revelation right now, knowing that all decisions we make would be made with light and wisdom? So right now, we are five weeks into this count, 37 days and 12 days to go. So now, about 1,000 years ago, the mystics decided to infuse this time with even more meaning, assigning each week a divine attribute. The first week was compassion, the second week, justice, and so on. So now, in our fifth week, we've arrived at divine foundation, the root of all power and potential healing and ultimate wisdom, righteousness and peace. That is what infuses this week. So in many ways, this council is the foundation of power and potential healing in our city. So today, to begin the session, I will invite you back to your foundation for how you became an alderman. In some ways, this morning, you will offer yourself the blessing you need. So to do that, I invite you to close your eyes. And as well as you can, quiet your mind. As you recall, the first time you felt called to service, and not as an alderman, but as a human being, recall the first time you were called to service. How old were you? How did you act on that call? Did you shy away, or were you ready? Recall that feeling, the feeling of being called to service. And now, think of an ancestor, a relative, a mentor, or a teacher, who saw your potential. A relative, a mentor, a teacher, a pastor, an imam, a sibling, a stranger. Who saw your potential for service? And if no one comes easily to mind, picture yourself. You see your potential. So whoever comes to mind, a relative, a mentor, a pastor, a rabbi, imagine them standing behind you now, with a gentle hand on your back, saying these words to you. "I believe in you. The work you do has the power to heal our city. May you feel as called to service today as you did when you first heard that call. May you realize your potential to do good, to listen to new ideas, to model civility, to make sure to make decisions with moral clarity. May you recognize the humanity and dignity inherent in all the inhabitants of our city and in this chamber, and treat them with reverence and respect. May you find yourself in your work, this great passion project, energized and strong, honest and humble, hopeful and true to your calling. And may you connect once again and perpetually to your foundation of goodness, of wisdom, of righteousness, working toward peace. And to that we say amen."
All right. Next up, public comment. Mr. Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. The first speaker is Shamika Tori.
Good morning. My name is Shamika Tori. I'm a room attendant at the Hyatt Regency McCormick Place and proud member of Unite Here Local One. I'm a Chicagoan, born and raised. I grew up in the Robert Taylor Homes on the Lower Inn. And now I live in West Woodlawn in the 20th Ward with my three children and three grandchildren. I got my union job when I was just 21 years old. I make a good wage and have great affordable health insurance today. 24 years later, two of my children's work at my hotel with me. Thanks to our union job, we can pay our bills and keep up with the cost of rent. Too many young people in our communities are in desperate need of good jobs like mine. And for too long, they've been forgotten and left behind. The Chicago Casino will let more people like me have a shot at changing their lives for the better, but only if the Chicago City Council acts now. I hope the Chicago City Council will take the next step today and support the Chicago Casino. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tori, for your comments. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Moreno.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Moreno. Soy una recamarrera en Holiday Inn Mar Plaza aquí en Chicago.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Moreno. I am a room attendant at the Holiday Inn Mar Plaza Hotel here in Chicago.
Llevo 23 años trabajando ahí. Estoy orgullosa de ser miembro de mi unión, United Here Local One.
I've worked there for 23 years. I'm proud to be a member of my union, United Here Local One.
Vivo en Hermosa, en el distrito 31. Soy dueña de mi casa, donde vivo con mi hija de 18 años.
I live in Hermosa, in the 31st Ward. I own my house, where I live with my 18-year-old daughter.
Gracias a mi unión tengo un trabajo que me permitió comprar mi casa y crear un futuro mejor para mí y para mi hija.
Thanks to my union, I have a job that let me buy my house and make a better future for me and my daughter.
Las trabajadoras inmigrantes como yo merecemos buenos trabajos con un buen seguro médico. Muchas trabajadoras como yo todavía no hemos regresado a nuestros trabajos debido a la pandemia.
Immigrant workers like me deserve good jobs with good health insurance. Many workers like me still haven't returned to their jobs because of the pandemic.
El casino de Chicago creará oportunidades para cientos de trabajadoras. Es urgente que la ciudad de Chicago actué ahora para mejorar las vidas de trabajadoras inmigrantes como yo. Muchas gracias.
The Chicago Casino will create opportunities for hundreds of workers. It is urgent that the city of Chicago act now to improve the lives of immigrant workers like me. Thank you.
Thank you and gracias, Ms. Moreno, for your comments. Our next speaker is George Blakemore.
Citizens, good morning. I am against the casino because I advocate for the casinos to be put in one of the black ghetto areas. The trickle-down economic theory is supposed to work like this. If the rich get rich, it will trickle down to the poor. But when it comes to black people, it end up a golden shower. You know what a golden shower is? When somebody pisses on you. That's what a golden shower. And the golden rule, he who has the gold rule, that's a rich area, where they put it right there, is Chicago and Hossfield. The fix is in. And these jobs, goods, contracts, and service, have you got a community agreement? How would it help the black people? Will they be working not on these little small jobs? These unions are racist too. Yes, they are. This city is racist. The games that people play, and you're playing game, "Black Lives Matter," when a black man is working. So that trickle-down theory, I'm gonna say it again. I'm keeping it real. When it comes to the black people, that gold is not coming. Well, what are the black people getting, Mr. Blakemore? Pissed on. That's the type of golden shower. And I spoke at each one of these casino meetings, and I told them the same thing. The golden rule is he who has the gold rule. And the rich get richer, and the poor get poorer. That would've been a golden opportunity to empower economic development in the black neighborhood, the ghetto. But the black people have gone. Over a million have left. Hispanics are moving in. Asians are moving in, whites are moving out. Why is it that blacks... Whites are moving in. Why is it that blacks are moving out? Why? It's a conspiracy, gentrifying, getting rid of black people. And now the casino gonna help us? I don't think so. I don't think so. We'll be peed on, pissed on, abused. So how did this happen? Poor black leadership. No black leadership. Now, these other people say immigrants gonna be working. You was born in America, and our people are the only ones that was raised in America.
Mr. Blakemore, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Esther Morales.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Esther Morales. Soy una recamarrera en el Crown Plaza Hotel aquí en Chicago.
Good morning. My name is Esther Morales. I am a room attendant at the Crown Plaza Hotel here in Chicago.
Llevo 18 años trabajando ahí. Estoy orgullosa de ser un miembro de mi unión, United Here Local One.
I've worked there for 18 years. I'm proud to be a member of my union, United Here Local One.
Vivo en la Villa, en el distrito 12, con toda mi familia, y todos vivimos en un edificio con tres apartamentos.
I live in Little Village in the 12th Ward with all of my family. We all live in the same building with three apartments.
Mi mamá es la dueña, y todos nosotros ayudamos a pagar los gastos.
My mom is the owner, and we all help pay the costs.
Gracias a mi unión tengo un trabajo que me permite mantener a mi familia y ayudar a mis padres.
Thanks to my union, I have a job that lets me support my family and help my parents.
Pero la pandemia ha sido lo más terrible que yo he visto.
But the pandemic has been the most terrible thing that I have seen.
Muchos de mis compañeros todavía no han regresado al trabajo.
Many of my coworkers have still not returned to work.
El casino de Chicago creará oportunidades para cientos de trabajadores como yo.
The Chicago Casino will create opportunities for hundreds of workers like me.
Es urgente que el casino city council vote "S" for the casino de Chicago. Gracias.
It is urgent that the Chicago City Council vote "Yes" for the Chicago Casino. Thank you.
Gracias, and thank you, Ms. Morales, for your comments. Our next speaker is Felicia Smith.
Good morning. My name is Felicia Smith, and I work as a barista at Starbucks at O'Hare Airport. I've been working there for nine years, and I'm a member of my union, United Here Local One. I grew up on the west side of Chicago, and now I live in the 6th Ward on the south side with my mom, my little sister, and my three kids. Having a union job means that me and my coworkers can stand up for ourselves. Because of my union, I have great health insurance, which means I get great service when I go to the doctor. I believe that everyone should be able to stand up for themselves at work. And I know that my neighborhood would be more stable, stronger, and safer with more good union hospitality jobs. Workers at the Chicago Casino will have a voice at work. And more union hospitality jobs at the Chicago Casino will lift up all our communities. I hope that you will vote "Yes" for the Chicago Casino. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, for your comments. Our next speaker is Saba Aman Malloy.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Saba Aman Noli. I am representing the Spiritual Assembly of the Bahais of Chicago, and I'm also president of the Hyde Park and Kenwood Interfaith Council and a member of the Interfaith Roundtable on Homelessness. Homelessness is a failure of our system, not of individuals. And Mayor Lightfoot and the City Council, we are asking you to use the power that you have to change the system here in Chicago. The letter that we delivered this morning to you had over 80 faith communities and leaders who have signed it, asking for you to help in this way. Our traditions teach us that change happens when we come together to advance and advocate for the good of all of our neighbors. I am guided by my Bahai faith in doing this work. One of our Bahai teachings says, "As the rich man enjoys this life surrounded by ease and luxuries, so the poor man must likewise have a home and to be provided such sustenance and comforts commiserate with his needs." This readjustment of the social economy is one of the greatest importance inasmuch as it ensures the stability of the world of humanity. And until it is affected, happiness and prosperity are impossible. We must do everything we can here in Chicago to strive for happiness and prosperity of everyone, not just the few. Mayor Lightfoot and City Council, thank you for listening, and we will keep the faith that you will move this proposal forward by taking the legally required step of putting "Bring Chicago Home" question on the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy, for your comments. Our next speaker is Yolanda Gorduno.
Hola, buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Yolanda Garduño. Vivo en Little Village, en el distrito 12, con mi esposo y mis dos hijos y mis nietos.
Good morning. My name is Yolanda Garduño. I live in Little Village in the 12th Ward with my husband, my two kids, and my grandson.
Soy una recamarrera en un hotel en el centro de Chicago, y llevo trabajando allí 15 años.
I'm a room attendant at a hotel in downtown Chicago, and I've worked there for 15 years.
Soy miembro de mi unión, United Here Local One. El tener la unión me garantiza que me traten como un ser humano.
I'm a member of my union, United Here Local One. More than anything, the union guarantees that I'm treated like a human being at work.
Mi sueño es asegurar que en todos los trabajos de la ciudad sean bien pagados.
My dream is to make sure that all jobs in the city are well-paying.
Por la pandemia, muchas trabajadoras no han regresado a sus trabajos, y ahora necesitan más trabajos bien pagados.
Because of the pandemic, many workers haven't returned to their jobs, and now they need good-paying jobs.
El casino elevará los trabajos a un nivel de dignidad del que podamos estar orgullosos.
The casino will elevate workers to a level of dignity of which they can be proud.
Más trabajos bien pagados y con un buen seguro médico beneficiará a toda la ciudad y a todas nuestras comunidades.
More good-paying jobs with good health insurance will benefit all of the city and all of our communities.
Espero que el Chicago City Council vote por sí por el casino de Chicago. Muchas gracias.
I hope that the Chicago City Council votes "Yes" for the Chicago Casino. Thank you.
Gracias, and thank you, Ms. Gordino, for your comments. Our next speaker is Fabiola Rivera.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Fabiola Rivera. Vivo en Albany Park, en el distrito 35, con mi hermana, mi esposo, y mis cuatro hijos.
Good morning. My name is Fabiola Rivera. I live in Albany Park in the 35th Ward with my sister, my husband, and my four kids.
Mi hermana y yo trabajamos de recamarreras en el Westin Chicago River North, en el centro de Chicago, y llevamos 15 años trabajando ahí.
My sister and I are room attendants at the Westin River North in downtown Chicago, and we've worked there for 15 years.
Soy miembro de mi unión, Local Uno, United Here Local Uno. Mi sueño es cumplir el sueño americano, tener mi propia casa, y sacar a mis cuatro hijos adelante.
My dream is to... I'm a member of my union, United Here Local One. My dream is to complete the American dream, to have my own home and move my four children forward.
Si más personas tuvieran trabajos como el mío, podrían quedarse en Albany Park y no ser desplazados.
If more people had jobs like mine, they could stay in Albany Park and not be displaced.
Si hubiera más trabajos buenos pagados, entonces la gente no tendría que salir de aquí.
If there were more good, well-paying jobs, then people would not have to leave from here.
Con más trabajos y más trabajos buenos, las personas pueden quedarse aquí con sus familias.
With more jobs and more good jobs, people could stay here with their families.
El casino va a crear más trabajos buenos y más oportunidades en mi comunidad. Espero que el Chicago City Council vote "S" for the casino de Chicago. Muchas gracias.
The casino will create good jobs and more opportunities for my community. I hope that the Chicago City Council will vote "Yes" for the Chicago Casino. Thank you.
Gracias, and thank you, Ms. Rivera, for your comments. Our next speaker is Paula Schignecki.
Paula, please press star six to unmute.
Yes, okay, I did. Hello, my name is Paula Schignecki, and I'm a member of St. Michael the Archangel Southshore Church at 8237 South Shore Drive, Chicago, Illinois 60617. I am inquiring if there has been any updates of landmarking the interior and exterior of the church. There are petitions going around for landmarking the church for inside and outside. The petitions are online and paper form. In 2018, Cardinal Blaise Supage merged St. Michael the Archangel Church with Immaculate Conception Church and told us that both churches will remain open. St. Michael the Archangel was an active church until Cardinal Supage closed the church in 2021. The church has not been disconsecrated yet, and things are being removed from the interior of the church. The interior items belong to the property of the church, and nothing should have been removed. The church was built in 1892 and was supported by hard-working parishioners for future generations to come. The church has been a gem to the neighborhood and community. I am... I am recommending the church to be landmarked of the interior and exterior of the church. The property can be used as a shrine, chapel, or monastery to be taken over by another religious order and not by the Archdiocese of Chicago. The property should stay as sacred Catholic space. Many hard-working immigrants built the church and supported it throughout the years. The property should be taken over by either monks or brothers who will make use of the property along with the rectory that is still there. This way, the church can still be open with Sunday services for the people to attend. Many churches have closed in the Archdiocese of Chicago due to financial mismanagement and to pay for the legal cases of abuse. Parishioners have supported their churches for financial support of their parish to keep the churches open. Other historical churches in the Archdiocese of Chicago want landmarkings such as St. Adelbert's in Pilsen. They have been in the process for the past three years for landmarking. We, as Chicagoans, need to pressure, preserve our historical history and create architectural buildings.
Schignecki, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Your Honor, there are no further speakers. Up for the public comment period.
All right, this concludes the public comment period. There are no resolutions on the agenda. Next up is Communications. Madam Clerk.
Communications from our Honored the Mayor to the Honorable the City Council of City Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing and transmit here with ordinances authorizing the issuance of housing revenue bonds for the rehabilitation development of affordable housing projects. Fiable consideration, these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development and transmit here with ordinances authorizing the approval of the Cicero Stevenson TIF redevelopment plan and project. Fiable consideration, these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Assets, Information, and Services and transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement with the Public Building Commission to authorize the use of TIF funds for Chicago projects. Fiable consideration, these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development and transmit here with ordinances authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreements with the Chicago Transit Authority to provide TIF funding for various transit stations, track, and turnaround improvements. Fiable consideration, these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing and transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of various financial assistance with the West Haven Park IID Housing Development Project. Fiable consideration, these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Aviation and transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of ground lease agreement with Illinois Bell Telephone Company, LLC. Fiable consideration, these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Budget Director and transmit here with a Fund nine twenty-five amendment. Fiable consideration, these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development and transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan forgiveness agreement with Horizon Community Service Incorporated. Fiable consideration, these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development and transmit here with ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned properties. Fiable consideration, these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the extension of the Fiscal Agent Agreement with Cook County regarding the Federal Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act Fund. Fiable consideration, these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Workforce Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Fiable consideration, these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follow: Executive Order Number twenty twenty-two dash two for increased enforcement of curfew hours for minors, an expression of opposition of proposed zoning reclassification of property at eight fifty-four West Castlewood Terrace. I City Clerk Valencia also informed the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, which are required by state statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two by being printed in full text and printed in pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the City Council of City Chicago. I also informed the City Council that the call for a special meeting on the matters considered by the City Council on May sixteen, twenty twenty-two, which are required by statute to be published in a book or pamphlet form, or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the City Council of City Chicago. I City Clerk Anna Valencia also informed the City Council with an ordinance authorizing Amendment of Year twenty twenty-two Annual Preparation Within Fund Number zero one zero zero to create a transportation assistance program which was passed by the City Council on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, which were requested to be published in special pamphlet form or published in special pamphlet form on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. I City Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications reports requiring City Council action: zoning reclassifications of particular areas referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards; claims against the City of Chicago referred to the Committee on Finance; Amendment of Municipal Code Section three dash fifty-six dash zero four four one concerned reduced term; real tax license referred to the Committee on Finance; Correction of April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, City Council Journal Proceedings referred to Committee on Committees and Roles. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the Mayor and other city officers.
Next up, ladies and gentlemen, are committee reports. Chairman Wagasback will start with the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met virtually on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, item one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to issue multifamily low-income housing bonds for the purchase and development of thirty-seven thirty-seven West Cortlandt Street by Enquanto Square Two LP, Enquanto Square Two GP, and Latin United Community Housing Association, or Lucha, in the twenty-sixth ward. If there's no one that wishes to speak, I move to confer with the committee's favorable recommendation by a roll-call vote.
Madam Clerk.
The E-voting is now open. Please make sure to hit refresh on your device and hit cast your vote. The voting is now open. If you need assistance, please raise your hand. Alderman Nada, do you need help? All right, I'm now going to read for folks who haven't cast their vote. Alderman Sawyer, are you in the room? Alderman Harris. Alderman Lee. Hope you're casting. You're getting help. Okay. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Burnett. Okay, here, Alderman Michelle Harris coming in to cast her vote. Just hit your iPad real quick. I'm still going through. Alderman Burnett, Alderman Reboyas, please cast your vote. Alderman Brookins, please cast your vote.
Madam Clerk, I believe that Alderman Maldonado wants to be recognized. recorded as present.
No, I did... I casted my vote. I just wanted to make a brief remark about this first issue that is in my ward.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for indulging me to speak on this item. This is a hundred and eighty-nine new affordable housing units that we are going to build in the twenty-sixth ward. This is a project that we've been working on for the last three years. And thank you to this administration and Mayor Lori Lightfoot. We are seeing the reality, the final phase to start construction in the very near future on the site just adjacent to the YMCA and just off the track of the six oh six. This is a great symbol of fighting gentrification. So because we're going to have a hundred and eighty-nine new affordable housing units for working families just off the symbol of gentrification, which is the six oh six. So with that, thank you, Madam Chair, for recognizing me and making this remark. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Lee, we'll just take a voice vote. Yay? Yay. Okay, we'll put you in. Okay, voting is closed.
The yays are forty-six, and nays are zero. Alderman Kapelman on a motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Item two is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with Build Incorporated, the broader urban involvement and leadership development team, and Build Support Corporation, developers to provide tax increment financing for eligible costs of renovation and facility addition of a youth community center with sports and fitness facilities located at fifty-one hundred and fifty-one twelve West Harrison Street in the twenty-ninth ward. If there is no one that wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections. So ordered.
That was Build. Build? Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, item number three is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds for eligible costs of a new soccer track, softball, and lacrosse fields at Northside College Preparatory High School, located at fifty-five oh one North Kedzie in the fortieth ward. If there's no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections. So ordered.
Madam President, item number four is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds for eligible costs of turf field replacement at Peter A. Reinberg Elementary School located at thirty-four twenty-five North Major Avenue in the thirty-sixth ward. If there is no one that wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections. So ordered.
Madam President, item number five is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds for eligible costs of a new soccer field and asphalt parking lot at Theodore Roosevelt High School located at thirty-four thirty-six West Wilson in the thirty-third ward. Alderwoman Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez would like to comment on this item.
The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
So we pass these allocations often here in City Council, and I think that sometimes it gets lost how transformative these allocations can be for our schools and our communities. And I wanted to take a second to speak about how transformative this allocation of five point eight million dollars is going to be for Roosevelt High School, which is the only neighborhood school, high school, in my ward. It's a ninety-six percent minority school where there is a lot of immigrant children, many refugees. And they have been waiting for this field for a very long time. We were able to have some of the members of the soccer team for Roosevelt, both the girls' and boys' teams, come to the finance committee and speak on why this was so important to them. But I wanted to share with you some... a short message that the principal of Roosevelt sent us on the allocation of this money. Bowl soccer and all sports at Roosevelt have required the use of external field because our own is in such sad shape: uneven footholes that can twist an ankle, scrubby grass, and worst of all, very poor drainage, resulting in an unusable mud bowl we call Lake Roosevelt after the frequent spring rains. So we use the park district and play on other school fields. This creates the extra burden of transportation to and from practices, meaning long days and likely getting home after dark. The expression "home field advantage" is real. Our kids are jumping on city buses, riding to other parks, often without places to change, carrying all their gear, soccer balls in shoulder bags, and then getting home late. Safety concerns are real in the city, and we have some unfortunate run-ins in the parks which do not have the oversight we can provide here at school. Nonetheless, our boys in the past year persevered through all of this, plus the return from COVID, and formed an incredible team. Pre-playoffs, they won every game except one, a tie. And then were undefeated in the playoffs to become Division III North-South Championship-winning team for CPS. The only thing keeping us from being Division II or I team is the lack of access to a state-standard field, which now will be in our school backyard. Our girls' teams are also in the cusp of entering the playoffs. Roosevelt has students that arrive at our door having been in Chicago and the U.S. for only days. Many are overwhelmed by all that is new around them. But we know if they look out on our soccer field, they are going to immediately feel a connection between their personal history and us, their new home and community. Some of the answers to our urgent need to support Chicago youth are not complicated. They're right in front of us. Create safe spaces, structure activities, and a community to identify with and call your own. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak, and I am very grateful for my colleagues passing this allocation today.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Chairman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections. So ordered.
Madam President, item number six is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds for eligible costs of a turf field replacement at Salmon P. Chase Elementary School, located at twenty twenty-one North Point Street in the first ward. If there's no one that wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections. So ordered.
Madam President, item number seven is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds for eligible costs of replacement of high-pressure steam mechanical systems at Albert G. Lane Tech High School located at twenty-five oh one West Addison in the forty-seventh ward. If there's no one that wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections. So ordered.
Madam President, item number eight is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds for eligible costs of the fire alarm system replacement and chimney stack reduction at John Marshall Metropolitan High School, located at thirty-two fifty West Adams Street in the twenty-eighth ward. If there's no one that wishes to speak on the item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections. So ordered.
Madam President, item number nine is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds for eligible costs of playground and sports field reconstruction and upgrades to the building automation system at Philip Murray Elementary Language Academy, located at fifty-three thirty-five South Kenwood Avenue in the fourth ward. 4th Ward. If there is no one wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report, corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 10 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds for eligible costs of the chimney stack reduction at Philip D. Armour Elementary School located at 950 West 33rd Place in the 11th Ward. If there is no one that wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number 11 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds for eligible costs of a chimney stack reduction at John Milton Gregory Elementary School located at 3715 West Polk Street in the 24th Ward. If there is no one that wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And Madam President, item 12 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds for eligible costs of chimney stack reduction at John D. Schuaf Math Science Technical Academy, E.S., located at 11140 South Bishop Street in the 34th Ward. If there is no one wishing to speak on this item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number 13 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds for eligible costs of chimney stack reduction at Simpson Academy High School for Young Women located at 1321 South Palina Street in the 28th Ward. If there is no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number 14 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide tax increment financing funds for eligible costs of the chimney stack reduction at John Greenleaf Whittier Elementary School located at 1900 West 23rd Street in the 25th Ward. If there is no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item 15 is the report of cases in which judgments or settlements were entered into for the month of April 2022, which will be placed on file with the clerk. Madam President, item 18A is a proposed order authorizing the Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Daniel Taylor versus the City of Chicago cited as 14C-V-0737 in the amount of $14,250,000. This is on the supplemental agenda. If there is no one wishing to speak on this item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item 18B is a proposed order authorizing the Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Bernilda Torres as independent administrator of the estate of Jose Angel Felipe Nieves, deceased, versus the City of Chicago et al., cited as 17C-88 in the amount of $1.898 million. If there is no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Chairman Wegas back.
Madam President, one second, please. Sorry. Pardon me. Item 16 is a proposed order authorizing the payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago and a proposed order in number 17 denying the payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago, and asks that these be filed in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes the report of the Committee on Finance. Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Wegas back. Next up, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the city council. Reporting for your committee on the budget and government operations, which held a committee meeting on May 18, 2022, the committee recommends passage of the following items. Number one, an ordinance concerning an amendment to the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund redevelopment agreement with Ogden-Washdenaw JV LLC for the property located at 2652 West Ogden Avenue in the 28th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two, an ordinance concerning the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Bubbly Dynamics LLC, including the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund grant and the Build Community Wealth bonuses at 1400 West 46th Street in the 15th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three, a substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance year 2022 within Fund Number 925 for the Department of Family and Support Services, Office of Public Safety Administration, and the Department of Water. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four, an ordinance amending Title XI of the Municipal Code regarding the voluntary water meter installation program. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five, an ordinance introduced by Alderman Gilbert Viegas concerning the transfer of funds within the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development for the year 2022. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, the committee also held a subject matter hearing on May 18 to discuss the quarterly budget update on the 2021 year-end estimates and the first quarter 2022, which was presented by Budget Director Susie Park of the Office of Budget and Management. No votes were taken as this was a subject matter hearing. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Dow. Next up, the Committee on Aviation, Chairman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the city council, reporting for your committee on aviation, which held a remote meeting on Friday, May 13, 2022. The committee recommends passage of the following item. Ordinance 2022-1215, various concession agreements at Chicago-O'Hare International Airport for individual leasing and licensing with Host International Incorporated, MRG Chicago LLC, and Chicago Hospitality Partners LLC, and separate remote web platform license agreements with Grab Chicago LLC for concession delivery services. Madam President, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman O'Shea. Next up, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, Chairman Viegas.
City council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. On Tuesday, May 17, 2022, the committee held a virtual meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Items one through seven are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas collectively voted on by the committee members and introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during the April 27, 2022 city council meeting. Appointment of William J. Shepard to SSA Number 8, Lakeview East Commission located in the 44th and 46 wards. Appointment of Allen O'Brien and reappointments of Kirby J. Kaiser to SSA Number 18, North Hosted, located in the 44th and 46 wards. Appointment of Daniel Ju to SSA Number 26, Broadway Commercial District Commission located in the 48th and 49th wards. Appointment of Omotola Akinibi to SSA Number 31, Greater Ravenswood Commission located in the 40th, 46th, and 47th wards. Reappointments of Nora McCarthy and Stephen Tobiason to SSA Number 29-2014, West Town Commission located in the 1st, 2nd, and 27th wards. I move passage of these appointments and reappointments by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item eight is an ordinance in support of a Class 6B tax incentive for property located at 3125 South Colon Avenue, introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during the April 27 city council meeting. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item nine is an ordinance in support of a Class 6B SER tax incentive for properties located at 3130 and 3136 South Colon Avenue in the 22nd Ward, introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during the April 27, 2022 city council meeting. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 10 is an ordinance in support of a Class 6B tax incentive for property located at 2800 to 2850 West Columbus Avenue, introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during the April 27, 2022 city council meeting. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 11 is a resolution calling for hearings regarding the Department of Assets, Information and Services current data sharing practices and tools in establishment of a plan to improve and implement effective data sharing platforms. This was previously heard during the Economic Capital and Technology Development Committee on April 19. However, no vote by the committee members on the resolution was taken until May 17, 2022. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 12 is a resolution calling for a subject matter hearing focused internally on the City of Chicago's current fleet electrification status and updates and goals for future implementation that are introduced at the March 23, 2022 city council meeting. This subject matter hearing built on the knowledge and insight shared during the first hearing held by the committee on January 19, 2022. That hearing allowed committee members to gain background of the importance of fleet electrification as it relates to health and environmental justice while learning from several national leaders in the industry. The second hearing demonstrated the importance of strengthening partnerships with the city and city agencies in effort to collectively drive real change as soon as possible because supporting fleet electrification can result in immediate air quality benefits, removal of a large number of carbon emitting vehicles, reduce dependence on harmful fuels presenting costly unnecessary local spending, utilize key local, state, and federal resources currently available and already identified for transportation electrification, establishing those funding sources to produce creative approaches to sustaining electrification throughout the city, such as tax incentives for infrastructure development that results in adoption of EV policies and programs for installing charging stations in public spaces that connect communities most impacted by emissions to equitable electrification opportunities. The second fleet electrification hearing was a huge success, and I want to thank the city departments and council members that attended. I'd like to especially thank those who contributed or participated, namely Samantha Bingham, Program Director from the Chicago Department of Transportation, Michael Conley, Chief Planning Officer, and Samuel Smith, Vice President of Government and Community from the Chicago Transit Authority, John Waddell, Deputy Commissioner, Geordi Lem, Manager of Vehicle Maintenance, and Kevin Campbell, Manager of Fleet Services and Automotive Procurement from the City of Chicago's Asset Information Services. Therefore, I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Viegas. Next up, the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy, Chairman Cardenas.
Madam President, members of the city council, reporting on your committee on Environmental Protection and Energy, which held a virtual meeting on May 10, 2022, to consider one item. The item was ordinance 02021-413, water affordability in the city's utility billing relief program. The item failed to pass in committee by a roll call vote, and that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Cardenas. Next up, the Committee on Health and Human Relations, Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the city council, reporting for your committee on Health and Human Relations, which a remote meeting was held on May 16, 2022. The following committee recommends passage of the following items. The first is 28 appointments to various committees, including the Advisory Committee on Equity, Committee on LGBTQ+ Issues, Advisory Council on New Americans, Advisory Council on Veterans, Advisory Council on Women, and various committee members on the Chicago Board of Health. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The other item for approval is the resolution expressing support for protection and expansion of abortion rights. If nobody is interested in speaking on it, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
On April 27, 2022, I and others introduced a resolution in effort to prepare for the soon public decision by the U.S. Supreme Court decision on Dobbs versus Jackson's Women Health Organization. Who would know that just five days later, following April city's council meeting, our greatest fears became reality with the leaked draft opinion signaling the overturning of Roe v. Wade, a reality that would be the first time in our history that such a fundamental right has been overturned and, most importantly, threatens 50 years of constitutional protections to reproductive rights and autonomy. While nothing is certain, it is clear that any right not directly written into the Constitution is no longer safe. This is a slippery slope, and we must protect the right to privacy. It must be codified by Congress as soon as possible. This resolution specifically calls for the city's continued commitment for the protection and expansion of abortion rights in an effort to ensure that both Chicagoans and those visiting the city who have lost reproductive rights have access to safe and equitable abortions. The resolution also calls to work with local and state officials to strengthen and expand abortion rights and directly oppose initiatives or legislation that seeks to threaten current standards of reproductive autonomy, healthcare access, and equitable and safe abortion services. I thank those who have already joined as a cosponsor and ask for a favorable vote by the members of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Viegas. Are there any other members of the body which should speak to this resolution? Chairman Sawyer, I believe that there's a member which should be recorded as a no vote.
Yes, with the exception of Alderman Spasato, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
We also held a subject matter hearing regarding publicly available bathrooms throughout the city of Chicago. No votes were taken. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Sawyer. Next up, the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a virtual meeting on May 18, 2022, and the following items were passed by the committee. Item number 02022-1279, an ordinance to amend Chapter 4 of the Municipal Code regarding outdoor entertainment venues regulation. I move that the city council incur in the recommendation of the license committing and pass this item by the same roll call vote as item number one of the Committee on Finance, with the exception of Alderman Smith and Alderman Riley voting no, and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 202022-946, an ordinance to repeal Section 4-2-32 of the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding operation of a parking garage within 200 feet of a hospital, church, or school. I move the passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 3, 02022-1028, an ordinance renewing restricted residential zone pursuant to Chapter 4-17 of the Municipal Code. 13th Ward, I move the passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
There were seven ordinances regarding moratoriums in the 1st Ward, 10th, 21st, 38th, 32nd, and the 39th Ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Chairman Mitz. Next up, the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Vice Chair Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the city council, reporting for your committee on housing and real estate, which held a remote meeting on May 17, 2022. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following. Item 102022-1273 is the supplemental agreement number two of an intergovernmental agreement with the U.S. Department of Army Corps of Engineers, Chicago District, for the extension of helipad, of a helipad located at 250 North Breakwater Access Road by the city until January 20, 2027, also in the 42nd, in the 42nd ward. I move for passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Thank you, Madam President.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
All right. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Burnett. You might as well get back up, sir. Next up is the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety.
Thank you, Madam President, reporting for your committee on pedestrian and traffic safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, May 19, 2022. Before the committee, there were 191 items. There were 190 routine items that passed and one routine item that did not pass. There were two substitute ordinances and one amendment to the Municipal Code ordinance introduced by the local alderman that passed. The first substitute ordinance was introduced by 4th Ward Alderman King, which is an ordinance for the amendment of the Municipal Code, Section 9-68-032, by adding portions of South Oak and Wall Avenue, East 32nd Place, East 32nd Street, South Ellis Avenue, and South Rose Avenue to seasonal parking permit program, 02022-1021. The second substitute ordinance was introduced by 2nd Ward Alderman Hopkins, which is an ordinance for the amendment of the Municipal Code, Section 2-14-132, and 9-76-140, to establish fine and penalties for operation of motor vehicles on public way without exhaust system or exhaust system components, 02020-4203. There was an amendment of the Municipal Code introduced by 44th Ward Alderman Tony, which is an amendment of Municipal Code of Chicago, Section 9-64-206, by installing parking meters and establishing hours of operation on portions of North Sheffield Avenue, 02022-1163. I move passage of these in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Burnett, and those matters will be considered in the omnibus. Next up, the Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Madam President, reporting for your committee on public safety. At Chairman Telefarro's request, the committee met on Friday, May 20, 2022. Item number one is 2022-1242, an amendment of the Municipal Code, 2-80-040, regarding age requirements for certain commissioners of community for public safety and accountability. I move passage by the first, I'm sorry, I move passage by the first finance committee vote, and I move for the associated motion to reconsider.
Sir, I believe, just one second.
I stumbled, I stumbled on my, what I had to say? Hold on. Did I read it again?
The chair reckon, all right. So Alderman Vasquez, you do not wish to speak on this matter? Okay. So the motion is for passage by the same, the first favorable roll call vote of Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider? Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is 2022-1596, an ordinance remending, amending, I'm sorry, Chapter 18-16 of the Municipal Code regarding curfew hours for minors. Chairman Mitz and I move to defer and publish this item.
That will be deferred and published.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes the report.
Thank you, Alderman Spazado. Next up, your actual committee, the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation.
Known as the Happy Committee, Madam President.
Known as the Happy Committee.
Okay, thank you. Madam President, members of the city council, reporting for your committee on special events, cultural affairs, and recreation, also known as the Happy Committee, which held a meeting on May 11, 2022. The committee recommends passage of the following items. 2022-1252, an expenditure of open space impact fee funds for environmental cleanup costs in development of Access Point Park at 1807-1815 North Kimball Avenue. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
20-22-1253, an expenditure of additional open space impact fee funds for reimbursements of environmental remediation costs associated with Garfield Park Eco Orchard on Beacon City Parcels on 5th Avenue between South Kedzie Avenue and South Mozart Street and at 3013 West 5th Avenue. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call, roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 20, 2022-1254, an expenditure of open space impact fee funds for expansion of Chicago River North Branch Wild Mile Floating Boardwalk and Habitat, including floating gardens located at Eastman Street north toward Weed Street. I move passage, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report, and it's a little, little tough sometimes when people are talking behind you, but thank you.
Folks, can you just keep your conversations to a minimum and keep your voices down? All right. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Chairman Brookins.
Good morning, Madam President. Reporting for your committee on transportation and public way, a meeting which was held on May 18, 2022. The following ordinances were passed by majority of the members present. On page two includes one ordinance for grant of privilege introduced by the local alderman from the 35th Ward. Pages three through five include 22 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local alderman from wards two, four, seven, 23, 27, 28, 33, 35, 38, 39, 43, 44, 47, 48, and 50. Page six includes one vacation ordinance located in the 27th ward. Madam President, if there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
The chair recognizes Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. I have some other items. Item two is the First Amendment to a Right of Entry Agreement.
Sir, this is other items from the Committee on Housing, is that correct?
Yes, I have other items from, for the Committee of Housing that I didn't have at my disposal at that time. So the other item, item two, is the First Amendment to a Right of Entry Agreement for a city use of Christ Universal Temple Inc. parking lot located at 1111901 South Ashland Avenue and 11901 South Loomis Street in the 34th Ward. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three, which is 02022-1276, is an agreement with the Metropolitan Pier and Exposition Authority for the use of office space and storage space by the Department of Police Bicycle Unit at McCormick Place Lakeside Center located at 2301 South King Drive in the 4th Ward. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item four, 02022-1256, is the negotiated sale of vacant city-owned property at 6831, 6833, 6835, 6837, and 6839 South Hosted Street to Beloved Community Family Wellness Center for Parking Expansion in the 6th Ward. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item five, 02022-1285, is an agreement with the Data Made LLC for the continued operation and improved functionality of the Large Lot Land Sale Program website. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we are going to temporarily pause committee reports and continue with subsequent items on the agenda. We'll come back to the last committee report later. Next up, matters on the agreed calendar. Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Matters on the agreed calendar. I received from the clerk, the city clerk, Anna Valencia, a total of 44 items proposed for the agenda, the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions for the following aldermen. Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Hairston, Alderman Harris, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Curtis, Alderman Roborus, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Capelman. I move that these be approved in the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, they will be included in the omnibus. Next up, a new business, starting with the first, Mr. Clark.
Claims-free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Lasbada has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 1431 North Claremont Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Hopkins has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 14X-8-802.2.2 concerning exceptions to heating requirements for dwelling and sleeping units, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman King has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Money Waters Drive, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Sawyer has proposed resolution to call for hearings on HIV crisis in African-American communities, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alman Sawyer also has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Benji Wilson Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Lopez has proposed order to call for clemency investigations incorporated to investigate claims of innocence made by Jerome Anderson, Yvonne Deloney, Jerome Johnson, and James Lenore, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alman Maldonado has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-022 and Section 4-60-023, 22, to disallow additional alcoholic and liquor licenses on portion of West Armistice Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Irvin has proposed ordinance for approval of a plat of market I M D re-subdivision, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Irvin also has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Officer Nicole Walker Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Waguspack has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 2775 North Alston Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Viegas has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Nugent, Alderman Dowell, and Alderman Haddon have a proposed resolution concerning reaffirmation of commitment to the protection reproductive healthcare rights, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 10-28, regarding renewal applications for sidewalk sign permits and operation of sidewalk cafes, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 4-60, regarding special conditions for Navy Pier liquor licenses, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 17-1-1406B regarding zoning map conversions in downtown areas, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-130, regarding hours of operation for outdoor patios within Central Business District, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Riley also has a proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 651 West Washington Boulevard, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Smith and Alman Riley have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-076, to prohibit outdoor entertainment venues within planned, within planned developments that permit residential uses, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Martin has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Ashland Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Haddon has proposed resolution to call for hearings on the deaths at James Schneider Apartments located at 7450 North Rogers Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Your Honor, that concludes all dramatic introductions.
Next up is the approval of the Journal. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the journals from April 27, 2022, or May 16, 2022, and move that both be approved.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Next up, unfinished business.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
The city council, ladies and gentlemen. The city council will now recess until 3:00 P.M. today and reconvene at that time back here in the city council chamber. The body will now stand in recess. 3:00 today. 3:00. 3:00. Chair recognizes Alderman, Alderman Tony.
Madam President, so the casino meeting will start at 1:00, and council will hopefully reconvene at 3:00.
Correct. Is that sufficient time, sir? Or would you prefer four?
I believe so. Well, I hope we can get our business done. Those that, those of you that are not going to be physically present for the casino committee meeting, there are updated materials on the way out. So those that will be physically here, they'll be at your desk. Those that are doing remote, whether it's here, upstairs, or whatever, there's packets out there with Nicole from my, my office. It gives you updated, all the, all the, all the questions, the changes, the, all that is in, in the packet. Otherwise... Otherwise, if you're physically here, there'll be copies available for you that you can have now, as far as I'm concerned, so, on the way out.
The body will be in recess until 3:00 p.m. Thank you.
Yes. 1:00, virtual and in physically in the chamber, depending on your wish.
We will now hear from the Special Committee on the Chicago Casino. Chairman Tunny.
Madam, Madam President and members of the City Council, presenting a report for your Special Committee on the Chicago Casino, which held a subject, which held subject matter hearings on April 24 and May 9, 2022, and which held a meeting on May 20 of 2022, which recessed and reconvened today, May 23, 2022. The following two items pertinent to the establishment of a Chicago casino received a due-pass recommendation by a majority of the members present. First, a revised substitute ordinance amending titles 2, 4, 8, and 17 of the municipal code regarding a casino in the city of Chicago. And second, a substitute resolution concerning the development and operation of a casino in the city of Chicago. Chairman Irvin and I move to defer and publish these two items.
Be deferred and published.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Tunny. Next up on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any miscellaneous business.
The date and time of the next meeting.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and the time.
One moment, one moment, sir. The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Recorded as being present and voting I in the first order of Finance Committee.
So reflected. The Chair recognizes Alderman Telefarro.
Madam President, I would be recorded as present as well.
So reflected. Alderman Mitchell, the date and time of the next meeting.
I've handed up the, an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time for the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, can you please read the ordinance?
The next regular meeting of the City Council of City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, May 25, 2022, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in the Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. If prior to then there is a determination in accordance with Section 70 of the Open Meetings Act, that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to COVID-19, the next regular meeting of the City Council may be conducted by video conference in accordance with the applicable law. Any such determination will be posted on the City Clerk's website, along with an amended meeting agenda, indicating that the meeting will be conducted by video conference by 10:00 a.m. on Monday, May 23, 2022. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after passage. Alderman, Alderman Gregory Mitchell, 7th Ward.
Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Onto the omnibus. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll see you on Wednesday.